Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' Joint Special Meeting with the Morganton City Council Tuesday, December 20, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting to order. All Commissioners are present. Madam Clerk, I would like to remind you, if you're making presentations this afternoon, to come to the table or to the podium, speak closely and into the microphone so that we can all hear and that our clerk can get the information that she needs. I would also ask you to silence your mobile devices at this time, and I would like to give Mayor Thompson an opportunity to call the City Council to order if he needs to do Thank you again. We appreciate the Council being with us today. All right, this time we'll approve the agenda for the meeting. Gentlemen, you have seen the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Submerge, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. All in favor, please signify by the up lifted hand. That would be all of us. At this time, I'll ask our county manager to move forward with our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, Mayor, City Council, we appreciate your being here and other interested parties. We have Peter from DFI and Pat from North Carolina Department of Commerce. So Peter, if you're ready to take the helm, please do.
Just a couple of moments on the background of what Peter will then present on. In the FY '15 budget year with the state of North Carolina, there was a piece of legislation in that budget to do a study of the Broaden property that would eventually be vacated. Representative Blackwell and Senator Daniel were very involved in getting that legislation passed, and it was a $200,000 grant if we matched it, and we being those working on it, the town and the county and some other organizations, if they raised an additional $200,000. We did do that, and the task force for that original legislation, where we had to collaborate and cooperate with the Department of Health and Human Services and the Department of Administration, and then including the town and the county. The task force, after many conversations, contracted with the Development Finance Initiative at the School of Government to perform a study on that property. The legislation called for the Broaden property itself, as well as the contiguous acreage around in that area, which turned out to be about 800 acres. We finished up a report with the Development Finance Initiative. That report was presented to the General Assembly in June of 2016. In this most recent budget, the FY '17 budget, we received, meaning Commerce and the Rural Division, another $500,000 to continue that study of the Broaden property and the potential reuses of that property. We again are working with DHHS and DOA, the town and the county, and just a few weeks ago, we signed another memorandum of understanding, memorandum of agreement with the Development Finance Initiative at the School of Government to continue the next scope of services for that property. And that's what we're here for this evening. Peter Savalich with the Development Finance Initiative is the project manager for that Broaden study, and he will present that next scope of services. I want to say how proud, when we first contracted with DFI, meaning Commerce and DHHS and DOA, and I was talking to the individuals at the Development Finance Initiative, and I was kidding them and saying, you know, if we contract with you, I want a really good product at the end of this that the state of North Carolina can be proud of. They by far exceeded my expectations in the work that was presented to the General Assembly this past June. Looked very much forward for the next product, the next scope of services that DFI will be doing. So with that, I will turn it over to Peter Savalich with DFI, and he will present on that next scope of services. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners and Council members, for allowing us to be here to present to you today. Thank you, Pat, for the introduction. I'm a project manager with the Development Finance Initiative. My name is Peter Savalich. I've been working on the Broaden Hospital project since its creation. We want to acknowledge the stakeholders who that participated in this process with us in the initial study. That included several state agencies, in addition to the key agencies mentioned in the enabling legislation of Commerce, Administration, and DHHS. We also worked closely with the Governance Office of State Budget Management, the Department of Public Instruction, the Department of Public Safety, and Department of Cultural Resources. And then at the local level, we worked with the leadership and the staff of the city, the county, the Community College, the School for the Deaf. I'm very appreciative of everyone's contributions to our initial planning effort. The next phase of work is largely about taking the vision plan document, the feasibility assessment that you council members and Commissioners have a copy of this evening, which is also publicly available on the DFI website, taking that plan and moving it forward towards realization. But to kind of make sure that we're all on the same page, I want to do a quick recap of what's in that plan and what the vision is for the property, recognizing that it is guidance for the next steps, so that as we move towards execution, there'll be lots of opportunities for refinement and evolution and coordination with your respective communities. The vision is encompassing all 800 acres of the property around Broaden, the North Carolina School for the Deaf and Community College, and the county-owned property in what we refer to as the study area. Our recommendation was to pursue a comprehensive redevelopment strategy for that entire 800-acre district, focusing on three main quadrants for development activity around the historic Broaden Hospital campus in the northeast, the areas for redevelopment around the core campus of the School for the Deaf northwest, and then the underutilized property in the southeast corner of the site that's shared between DHHS and County and Community College. And then connecting those all together through a network of public infrastructure amenities along Hunting Creek that would connect the site to downtown. The mix of uses on the property is spread out between a residential school accommodating roughly 400 students, a mix of multifamily products, whether it be ownership or rental, and we specifically identified the potential for a seniors-focused community in addition to general market rate housing on the site. We also identified an opportunity for a hospitality-oriented village concept that would include commercial retail development alongside a roughly 120-man hotel. That is the general vision that we came up with, and that drove the analysis and the feasibility assessment recommendations to the state. Those numbers that did their layout, that can all change as we move towards execution. To kind of remind you of the vision, we're going to show you a few of the before and after renderings of how we see this program being laid out on the site. This is a picture looking towards historic Broaden Hospital campus from east to west, and the foreground is historic Broaden, the Jones Building with the Avery Building on the edge there. That's the current condition today. Re-envisioned as a residential school, you see that the campus changes to remove some of the nonhistoric buildings in the property, capture more of a inner quad area, and sees the Avery Building and the surrounding buildings reused as residential halls and academic classrooms and support spaces. Moving now to the northwest corner of the site where the School for the Deaf campus is, this is a view of the property looking inwards in the southeasterly direction over what's currently Goodwin and Joyner Hall. Those are abandoned structures, and in the vision, we would see those structures repurposed as core amenities for a senior living community with apartments and cottages flanking on either side. And then in the southeast corner of the site, what you see here is the existing conditions with the historic Colony Building in foreground and some of the Community College facilities, the Building K complex, and the silo barns to the right there of the view, looking back in towards the creek and the valley. We re-envisioned this as being a hospitality village with the Colony Building being the welcome area, the lobby reception for a hotel that would include several other new construction facilities to be the rooms and cottages to accommodate that, and then the historic barns being adapted here and used for retail here towards the local food systems that have generally allowed development in Morganton today. Importantly, we see that the public amenities in the district, which would be truly public amenities, bringing people from all parts of the community into the district to enjoy the natural assets and the beauty of the site, would connect downtown Morganton all the way through the site along Hunting Creek with the Greenway Spine, would adapt the ESTC, Emergency Services Training Complex, in the center of the site into a stormwater retention pond that would also serve as a water feature for the site, and an acre for parks around the center of the site, and then link all the institutions and the development activity on the periphery via greenways to that central Greenway Spine, and then seeing it stronger, better protection, and by connection to downtown Morganton at the northern point of the study area where Fleming and Sterling intersect right now. Those are critical assets to making sure that the full development potential of the site is leveraged, and also making sure that the community as a whole can enjoy the benefits of the site. This is the last rendering here that shows a perspective of looking north towards downtown Morganton overlooking Stormwater Pond, the parks around it, the new hospital there in the foreground. So that is the vision in a few pictures. The vision in terms of numbers, roughly $152 million of private investment, which would be leveraged with the $140 million in public investment. Included in that $140 million is the state's investment in a residential school, and then there's a portion of additional state investment in replacement facilities constructed for the various agencies that currently occupy parts of the site that would become surplus property, including public safety, public construction, and DHHS. And then a portion of that would be, or we're calling local, investment in public amenities and infrastructure. The allocation of those costs was defined in the study report as being related to the assets and who owns those assets or who would benefit from those assets primarily, and that's why the public amenities and infrastructure in the district were primarily associated with local investment. Roughly $16 million of that local investment are the direct amenities themselves. This is how this is broken out. In our early conceptual design and pricing exercise, we associated roughly $3 million to the Greenway Spine, roughly $7 million to the downtown Gateway Park and intersection improvements at Sterling and Fleming, and an important chunk of that is also associated with the Stormwater Pond. Refining those numbers and determining what's the scale and scope of those amenities and envisioning those out at a more fine-grained level would be a part of the next steps of our process, working with your respective boards. So that is the vision at full buildout, but how do you get there? We envisioned a few phases, and this is the hopeful full buildout of this vision would be over roughly 10 years. So in the last year, we've been spending the time developing the plan and the study, taking what was existing on the site and imagining what it could be. In the next year, by the end of 2017, we'll be doing pre-development planning in conjunction with the local government and with the state agencies that all have portions of the site that they control and have an interest in. And then Phase One, we envision would be the reuse of the Broaden Hospital property, the first phase of new construction and adaptive reuse of the vacant property adjacent to the School for the Deaf, and the first batch of the public investments in amenities and infrastructure to connect that northern half of the district through downtown. The third phase would be expansion of the senior living or other residential development in the first phase, and then starting to create that hospitality village in the southeastern corner of the site. And then the final phase would be likely the construction of the hotel. So that is a way that we see this whole plan playing out over the course of 10 years. There's many ways that that could play out based on the development interest that's cultivated in this district and how the local government and the state governments prioritize the investments they want to make in order to encourage private investment. Now that we've laid out a vision, a timeline for 10 years, let's get down to what do we do now, what's important to be working on in the next 12 months to get us there. This chart up here is meant to represent the complexity associated with the 10-year plan and all the steps that are involved in it. We've broken it down into three major bodies of work. There are the key developments on the site, the construction of the facilities such as the residential school, the multifamily development, the hospitality village, there's the construction of the amenities and infrastructure that tie those together, and then there's the agency planning, actions, and funding strategies around building the amenities and the infrastructure. So I'm going to dive next into Phase One, which you recall was the reuse of the Broaden Hospital property, some of the first phase of private investment in the public amenities and infrastructure, and talk a little bit about the interdependencies there and what the public planning processes are that are required to execute. In Phase One, our recommendation was that the residential school would go into Broaden. Western Campus for School for Science and Math is underway in deciding where its site will be within the larger study area. This plan is predicated on the recommendation of our report. Their target is to be starting classes in the new campus by the fall of 2021, and they envision roughly two and a half years of construction required and roughly a year of design. So in the next year, they are making their recommendations to their Board of Trustees about where their facility will be sit and what the costs associated with that are. When they define that area, we can also define what are going to be the first phases of private investment, such as the adaptive reuse of other historic structures around Broaden to complement that with multifamily residential apartments and condos to support the faculty and staff at the school, as well as people in the general community that want to live close to that asset, the employees at the hospital that would like to live closer to their employer. And then the first phase of the senior living can undertake its planning and development and construction. That happens all in roughly the period of 2017 to 2021. Having the amenities and the infrastructure investments from the public come alongside of that is important to making sure that those public investments in the school and the private investments in multifamily development can be fully realized. There are several layers of public investment in amenities, and so in the next two years, we anticipate that should the local governments commit to investments in those amenities, that they'll need to pursue those strategies in 2017, planning them, pricing them out, trying to develop the financing strategies for those and committing to those investments contingent on the property being made available by the state. And so lastly, where the rubber kind of meets the road is where are all the agency actions that are required between now and then to make all the pieces fall together. While the city and county are contemplating their investment strategies, the Department of Health and Human Services is laying out their plans for moving out of the historic hospital, building replacement facilities as needed to accommodate their full program. The Department for Public Safety is evaluating their opportunities for citing a new laundry facility elsewhere to make room for the residential school and the historic Broaden Hospital campus, should that be where they choose to cite it. The Community College is planning for the next iteration of the Emergency Services Training Complex in order to make way for the Stormwater Pond and the public parks of that vision. And so between 2017 and 2018, these agencies are all working in parallel but coordinated around establishing, sizing those potential investments, and making baby steps towards commitments to each simultaneously. DFI is here to help facilitate this process. This is what the Department of Commerce has engaged us to do. Much like we did with the initial study, we are contracting with architects and engineers to help us refine the designs and the plans and the budgets associated with the different components of the investment. But unlike the study, our deliverable is not another report to you. Our deliverable is helping you understand the areas where you can invest in order to leverage private investment and then cultivate the private investment while you're lining up your commitments. So we're here to help facilitate multi-agency coordination between the state and the local levels, to help advise the state and the public agencies that own assets on the site that would be redeveloped through private or public investment about how best to treat those buildings and those lands between now and then. We're here to do more detailed site analysis and design, biomineral due diligence, surveys of the property, making sure that we really understand the engineering and the costs associated with all the investments that are being contemplated in the vision, so everything is feasible, and then be here to provide the Development Finance, financial modeling and feasibility assessment horsepower to answer questions that the various stakeholders might have about how to structure the funding of their investments in order to best mitigate their risks. And then we're here to cultivate the private development interests. That's what DFI does in each of our communities, walking local governments and state governments through the development process to get you to the point where you're ready to partner and indicate that you're ready to commit to investment should private developers step up. As you see fit, we're here to also help you engage the broader community in refining the vision and making sure that there's buy-in for the investments that are being contemplated in order to realize the full district plan. So broadly speaking, that's what we're here for. The timing of that is, as we mentioned before, heavily focused on planning in the next 12 months to coordinate with the parallel planning processes of the different agencies to make way for the district plan to be realized, but we're here to be a resource to you as you see fit. So to conclude, where does this leave the city and the county in the process? At this point, our recommendation, and this was explicit in the final study report as well, is that you need to decide if you want to support the district, in which case, if you do, the public amenities and infrastructure are the primary area where we see an opportunity for city and county collaboration on investment. You'll realize the benefits of the private investment together, though it makes sense for the city and county to cooperate on the public investments together through the form of an inter-local agreement. We recommend targeting the end of this current fiscal year, May-June of 2017, for a commitment to share responsibilities around the public infrastructure and amenities investments. Not all of those investments will be fully refined down to the dollar, and the timing of those may still be contingent on other commitments from other agencies and private sector actors that would partner with you, but having in principle and in a written agreement those commitments to work together is what's going to be an important signal to both the potential private developers, as well as to the state, that Morganton and Burke County want to realize this plan as you see it, and bring those other actors closer and closer to a partnership with you. That concludes our presentation, our remarks. Happy to answer questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I'll open the floor. Questions from Commissioners and Council at this time? I believe you've stunned us all, Peter. Could you elaborate a little bit on this idea of a district plan? How would that be made up? How would it function? What are you thinking there?
So the district plan can be thought of simply as the design, but there's also an important governance and management component to that. Should you see all these facilities built out and potentially through various public-private partnerships with distinct investors, you nevertheless want to make sure that the plan and the vision of it are coherent. And so we recommend developing a master plan that defines some of the expectations around the scale and scope of development in the district. Potentially, you might go as far as determining certain design standards for the district, but it also would dictate where are, most importantly, where are the development sites within the district that are viable, and how, where the public will invest and where the private sector will invest. These types of districts can be formalized through a municipal service district legislation or an economic development area legislation that would give local governments a measure of control. You might set up a separate governing body associated with those. Those types of mechanisms are ones that we could help analyze and determine what's appropriate for this setting. In some places where these districts are entirely created out of private investment, there is a property ownership association that manages the district, and there's an appointed association manager to guide those investments, so to shepherd the realization of the district over the many years that it takes to build it. So the district plan is initially just a vision, but you also want to create a framework that gives a structure and provides for the controls and the checks and balances as it gets built out.
So do you see the state divesting itself of this area that we would call the district? Is that what you're thinking?
The 800 acres was the study area of our report. We don't see that to realize the district, the state needs to relinquish all of its property within the 800 acres. For instance, one of the ways that the local governments and the state could collaborate around the public amenities and infrastructure would be through easement agreements, where investments by local government in a public amenities, say the Greenway Spine, were enabled and given, you were given the certainty and the protection of a formal easement agreement with the state to allow you to make those investments, to maintain those investments, but the land continues to be owned by the state, as opposed to, say, carving off that piece and trying to convey it independently to the local government or another entity. Now, the state's going to continue to be a property owner in the form of the new Broaden Hospital facility, the School for the Deaf, potentially the state through the Western Campus of the School for Science and Math. So we do not see the state divesting more selectively, seeking to designate some surplus property for private investment, and then working with the local governments on exactly what the site control strategy is around the areas where there's public amenities and infrastructure.
Mr. Chairman, could I come back up and make a comment, please? In November of '13, and I'd been at Commerce two or three months, Representative Blackwell called me over to his office and began to talk about this project, and began to talk about if he developed legislation and got legislation passed, then could it come to Commerce? Would Commerce accept the responsibility of being a lead agency? Should we not be a lead agency? Should DHHS be a lead agency? You know, et cetera, et cetera. But here's the vision that he recounted to me that day as we discussed original legislation. And I work for the state of North Carolina, very proud of that. Representative Blackwell does, and from conversations with him, he's proud of that also. But we also recognize, as I think others do, that when the state tends to vacate property, a usual scenario in some places is, okay, let's vacate it, and perhaps after a year or two, when the graffiti starts, let's fence it up so there's no more damage done, and then maybe another year or two passes, and we stand back and we look at it, and we think, hmm, what can we be doing with that property? When I was in Representative Blackwell's office in November of '13, that's what he expressed to me, and he said, that's the purpose of the legislation I want to pass. Can we begin to look at this property, knowing that... Can we begin to take a look at it and at least do a study, do some potential investment on the front end, and look at potential reuse of that property?" That's where the entire conversation began. He asked, and asked me if I would ask Secretary of Commerce, who was Secretary Decker at that time, if in fact, we could place this in Department of Commerce, and his choice was to put it in the Rural Division. So, I'll conclude my comments with this. I've been an economic developer for, I guess, 15 or 20 years. This is truly the first really transformational project I've seen. I've seen a lot of great projects, but not one this transformational. And looking at the region, not just Burke County, but looking at the region, and if you look at Appalachian State University on the northern side, who receives, I think, $62, $63 million in the recent bond referendum to put a new health sciences building there for the College of Health and Applied Health, whatever the college is called, and you look at the southern end of that, down at Western Carolina University, and their new life sciences building that they received money for in the bond package. And then you look also in that bond package at the Western School of the Science and Math located, is to be located in Burke County. If you look across that swath of 23, 25 counties across North Carolina, western North Carolina, I think this is, and what Peter's talking about, the vision of a district and all of the amenities that can go with that, I think this is a much bigger project than just the amenities, a much bigger project than just when the hospital gets relocated and what goes in the Avery Building, and a much larger project for the entire western part of North Carolina and what Burke County, a major psychiatric hospital, a Western School of Science and Math, which is going to be an incredible asset for the community, as well as the anchors on either end of that swath of counties, and Appalachian State University and Western Carolina University. So, when we think about looking at the framework, as Peter's talking about it, and a district framework, it lets us, I think, at least in the economic development field, and hopefully for the council and the commissioners, begin to get our mind around just what the possibilities are when we take Representative Blackwell's vision of, let's not close it, vacate it, fence it up, try and stop the graffiti, and then a few years down the road, what can we do with it after it's in pretty sad shape? So, again, appreciate being here and didn't mean to go on quite so long, Peter, but did want to say that.
Jeff, I'd like to ask Peter if he could give us some examples of districts that may be working in the past. Maybe we could get a better grip on that, if he could, between public and private partnership, if he could do that.
Thank you for the question. These types of public-private partnerships happen regularly, particularly in urban environments where there's a emphasis on public infrastructure and leveraging those investments for private investment. What we're talking about here with this district is essentially an extension of downtown Morganton, but creating a destination for the larger region that leverages the natural assets there. So, there's components to it of this idea of a public investment that many, many groups benefit from. A couple of examples that are in North Carolina that are relevant, the town of Kannapolis, or the city of Kannapolis, rather, has recently acquired their entire historic downtown from the former owner of the Cannon Mills Village and is looking to leverage their ownership of that asset for a redevelopment of that mill with private investment in multifamily and some anchor institutions like the Performing Arts Theater, Minor League Baseball Stadium. In that case, they had full site control. In this case, we're trying to work towards that through the coordination of the state agencies and the local governments, the folks that own the property, to get the point about governance and site control being the critical path forward. Other contexts, and these are products where DFI is actively working, creating a wholesale new town center out of scratch in the town of Shiloh. Again, another development that's on a natural asset, the Shiloh River, has a lot of similar attributes to Morganton in that it's on the way to a lot of tourism destinations, and so trying to capture some of that economic development potential with more of an urban environment and destination that people will stop and visit, and also be an amenity for the community that doesn't have that type of sense of place. In this case, Morganton has a very strong sense of place, and so we don't want this district to compete with downtown Morganton and what the community already has there. But in that case, there's, again, a private investor coming in, committing to investments in the public sector, making commitments to build infrastructure in the form of what's in the ground, the horizontal utilities, as well as connections to parks, Riverwalk. So, those commitments are being made in parallel. The local government's not going out in front and building everything and then hoping private investment comes along, but we're, DFI is helping those local governments attract the private investment simultaneously with mapping out the full vision, and then private investors come in and they might shape the scale and scope of the development a little bit, but it's all in line with what the commitment has been from the local government. And so, you're protecting your interests in that way by not getting too far out in front.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman. I may. Reading through some of the material, from what I understand, this will create somewhere around 1,600 jobs, and will also have a new school and a place for a lot of the people going, or students going to the school will have a place or a dorm to live in. But I guess my question is, you have an estimated cost of $73.9 million for a school, and just wondered what kind of school that is, because that's, from what I understand, it will take care of 150 to 200, or maybe to 400 students. So, I just wondered what kind of facility is going to cost $73.9 million for 300, say, an average 300 students?
Yeah, so that number was based specifically on the idea of a residential school for high schoolers, up to 400 students in enrollment. So, all the residential halls, the support services for on-campus living, as well as the academic spaces and the administrative spaces and amenities for that school. I'll speak directly to it. The School for Science and Math is a potential tenant to fill that vision of a residential school. That 74 million number is an estimate for a full master plan for a campus over several years of construction to realize the full vision of that school. The funding may not be all provided upfront. There would likely be phasing as the school grows into that footprint, because, you know, a new school will not start on day one with its full expected enrollment, but rather a portion of it, and then add to that over time. So, when we compare the per pupil costs associated with that 400-student school that might fit into the historic Broaden Hospital campus, it's very comparable to a new construction residential school that you might build out in Greenfield.
Well, I think part of the reason for the question was, are we going to have a total different aspect of the way we teach those students at that school other than, say, our public schools?
The residential school program and curriculum are kind of outside the scope of our analysis, so that could go a lot of different ways based on the particular curricular plan. These residential schools often have a specialty curriculum that they focus on, and the amenities associated with building out that school are not much more than a traditional secondary school. It's just that you have the residential component of it, that you're bringing students from farther away, and they need a place to live. So, that accounts for the bulk of the additional costs beyond a traditional school.
Well, it's a very exciting project, to say the least. It's bigger than a project for accounting our size. And I guess my final question would be based on, how do we help? How do we and you, and when do we begin to promote this? And will we have a huge promotional beginning to try to draw in, because it's a multi-project to, for public, for government, for free enterprise to join together and to get some, I guess, just the best way to say it, major players to commit? How do we help, I guess?
Thank you for that question. The first step that we are trying to move through this coming year with your cooperation and support is formalizing the development plan in terms of the sites within that district that could be redeveloped. That involves a process with the state agencies of designating surplus property that could then be pursued for private development or other public development. So, DFI through the Department of Commerce will be pushing the plan as currently envisioned towards that. Now, the county owns some of that property, and the county is implicated in that as well. There are some county facilities and county land that is envisioned for different uses in the full build-out of the district. So, we want to have a conversation with you about the vision, and does that comport with your plans for those facilities, and how do we reconcile those if there's a difference? But also, I want to emphasize that a strong city-county partnership around the way you want to support the district speaks volumes to the state in motivating them. It also speaks volumes to the potential private developers. So, until we can really coordinate city and county and then bring state cooperation into that to define the development sites, we don't want to get too far out in terms of promoting the vision plan, because we'll be several steps removed from actually being able to react to interest. There could be development interest that's knocking on the door tomorrow, but we're really not in a position to incorporate their ideas and strategies into the district plan until we have that formalized site control. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did, but I do, and am aware of some industries looking, and you don't want to wait too late that they go somewhere else. If they knew about this, they would consider Burke County and this project as a place to invest in. So, that's the reason I was wondering about the promotion thereof and the timetable and just how much.
Yeah, our goal would be, if we continue to use the end of the fiscal year, May-June timeframe, as a target for formalizing and structuring the city-county partnership, that around that time, we would also begin more proactively soliciting and cultivating private investment interest. Now, we would not turn anyone away who comes knocking and says, "I've seen the plan. I'm interested in this piece of it," or "Tell me more." Should you get those types of inquiries, we're happy to support you in having those conversations. And meanwhile, while we get those inquiries, we're working with Commerce on how to vet those and filter those, recognizing that we need to keep those leads warm while we get the public-private partnership house in order. So, I certainly appreciate your concern there about wanting to make sure we capture the interest at while we can.
Mr. Chairman, one question I had, obviously, I'm excited about this opportunity. Great presentation. I will say, you know, one concern, and one with the new Broaden Hospital, well, it's still being built, obviously, some historical structures had to come down. So, one of the most common questions I get is, are we going to repurpose those existing structures because of their significance, historical significance, or do we anticipate having to tear any of those buildings down?
Our plan was driven primarily by how can we most efficiently and completely reuse the historic buildings. You'll see that we were very strategic in trying to limit the historic structures that would need to be removed, and in fact, if you look at in the report on the portion related to Broaden Hospital, you'll see that there are some buildings designated for potential demolition. Those are actually the non-contributing historic structures to the historic district, and those potential demolition targets have been vetted with the state Historic Preservation Office, the idea being there that it enables us to more successfully redevelop the more prominent and more valuable historic buildings on the site if we can surgically remove some of the less contributing, non-contributing structures. Same thing goes for the other portions of the site that we identified for development. The School for the Deaf, again, the goal there is to really try and salvage the Goodwin and Joyner Hall buildings, which we know are cherished in the community. Right now, they're exposed to the elements. There's a window of time in which our team felt like, so get in there and effectively reuse those because they're beautiful structures. So, you saw that we really tried to feature those in our vision plan. Again, with the southeast corner of the site, the historic colony and buildings from the Broaden Hospital property that had been, over time, inherited by the Community College and the county, the Silo Barnes, we're really trying to elevate those. Those are a part of the selling points of this vision plan for potential developers, in part because of the ability to leverage historic tax credits for the redevelopment of those structures, but also because they create that genuine sense of place that you can't capture with new construction. That's what defines and makes this a potential destination, unlike others, that someone could go and just build something out of the ground. So, we very much want to prioritize historic preservation with the goal of trying to find adaptive reuse of it that's economically viable.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for Sally Sain, the city manager of Morganton, to please come forward for a question.
Peter, will you address for the group, because I know it gets confusing, and everybody's thinking about the different pieces, and we are talking about a vision plan. So, can you address, because there's another plan going on in study at the same time, which is for the Western School of Science and Math on this property that we've been talking about. Can you talk a little bit about how this process and that process will collaborate, and also how that will end up, those processes will end up collaborating with the ultimate decisions by the state of North Carolina for the properties that Broaden will need for their mission in addition to their new facility?
Do I need to repeat the question for the record?
Sure.
Okay. Just a quick, yeah, quick repeating of the question. How does the planning process, DFI has described here, that would be led by the Department of Commerce, coordinate with intersect with the School for Science and Math Western Campus planning process and the long-term plans for the new Broaden Hospital facility and the facilities that they need to realize their mission? Fortunately for us, they're all kind of going on simultaneously, so there's an ability to work together as opposed to have one plan set in stone and then have to work around it with everything else. DFI has reviewed the vision plan with the leadership of the School for Science and Math. They have recently completed their consultant team for their Western Campus Advanced Planning Process and the selection of their project manager. Over the next five months, as they ramp up, we're going to be working very closely with them on key planning activities to make sure that when they're studying their sites for the new facilities, whether it's a combination of adaptive reuse or new construction, and they're doing a scenario analysis, they're not simply taking our recommendation, even though we think it was very thorough, for going to the Broaden property, they're not simply taking that at face value, they're doing their own analysis. We're going to work with them. Several of the consultants on their team on the design side worked with us on our plan, so there's a lot of shared institutional memory there from our exercise, and make sure that as they move forward and finalize their recommendations to their Board of Trustees, our process is keeping up with theirs. So, should they choose to go in a different location within the district over the next 12 months and really much more front-loaded into the first five months of 2017, we'll be checking in with them to see how that's evolving. Should we have to pivot to an alternative scenario? We imagined an alternative scenario in our study for how you reuse the Avery Building and the Broaden Hospital property if it's not for a residential school. The risks there, as we've detailed, are that it's a longer, more protracted redevelopment of Broaden property, because the scale of the buildings that are being vacated, the rigidity of their layouts makes it a very peculiar case for adaptive reuse. It's not like a textile mill or a tobacco warehouse that's pretty wide open on the interior and just got beautiful four walls and roof. You've got very tight confines in some of these buildings within the Broaden property that are hard to re-envision. By the end of, by September 2017, they're going to make their recommendation. We will be prepared for whatever that is, because we'll be working with them over the next several months. The new Broaden Hospital facility, that question, the DHHS State Construction Office is a part of our task force looking at this. They were a part of informing the recommendations of the report. One of their inputs to the report... One of their inputs to the report, and you'll see that these costs were captured in the total public investment, is that they are willing to allow for a larger redevelopment of the historic Broughton Hospital campus, including some properties that, some of the buildings that they had previously said they would need to continue to use along the periphery of the core historic campus. They're willing to consider giving those up should there be enough support for the replacement facilities to be constructed. And so that's one of the exercises we'll be doing in parallel with the School for Science and Math, with our conversations with you about an interlocal agreement on public infrastructure and amenities, is making sure that we can appropriately account for their replacement facilities within the site and budget for those. So they're not, that's a contingent commitment by them to make way for the district based on making sure their mission gets fulfilled. I would say the same goes for the Community College. We worked with them during our planning process. You see that they made a lot of accommodations within the vision for relocating their facilities that they currently operate in the southeast corner of the site in the ESTC, with the recognition that the vision for the district adds value to their campus as long as they can find a place for those core functions to be relocated. So that's an additional stakeholder that we didn't mention, Sally, but we want to recognize that that's an important group that we'll be working with simultaneously. And really, you'll see that we're pushing a lot of balls forward at the same time, sort of getting everyone to the same place where they're ready to commit at the same time, not ask one group to jump in the pool and then wait for everybody else to jump in the pool. We all have to jump at the same time.
Any other questions from council or commission? Peter, we're on a pretty good time. I'm going to really put you on the spot and open the floor for maybe just a few questions, if there are any questions in the audience, that anybody would like to stand and pose a question for Peter. We'll be glad to let that happen.
Very strong thought, Paul. You mentioned, as we said, and you mentioned north access. Is that already sort of decided where that will be? Is that down to closing, like downtown Morganton, or is that a story? Or, I mean, you may have said it, or maybe I just missed it.
No, I did not say it specifically. You did not miss anything.
Thank you.
I will. Thank you. The question is, the comment in the public infrastructure and amenities that we had a north access road included. I'm kind of navigating back to the plan, and for the general public, this plan is available on the School of Government's website, sog.unc.edu/dfi/broughton. Come find me afterwards. I wish I could use the pointer on the monitors. Unfortunately, the laser won't show up on it, but we evaluated two potential locations for providing vehicular connections from Anola Road to Fleming Drive or the western side of the campus, recognizing that, you know, right now, if you want to get to one side or the other, you've got to kind of go around the entire property. And if we're trying to create connectivity between these institutions, not only is it pedestrian, but also maybe some vehicular. So we looked at a northern access, which was essentially taking Coal Shoot Road, which kind of goes along the southern end of the historic Broughton property and then comes out on Fleming, versus a new road that would sort of wind along where the current gravel road is between the western core campus of the Community College and the Richardson Complex or the eastern campus. Currently, there's a, it's more of a private gravel road between those two sides. Because of the topography, because of the power lines and the utilities that run there, parallel to Interstate 40 along that southern end, and simply the cost of accommodating all of those factors, if we had to prioritize one of those vehicular connections, it'd be much easier to do it along Coal Shoot Road on the northern side, hence the northern access road. So that's not been fully engineered yet for traffic impacts. That would be an important part of our next step, and that's something we're front-loading into the, our site analysis and design in the first part of 2017, is looking at bicycle, pedestrian, and vehicular off-site and on-site improvements, and what that means for traffic in the surrounding area. Obviously, we're adding some density to the site, so more cars. How does that impact the entire area?
And Danny Arum, you really thought, last I heard, the historic tax credits were slated to spend some, is that still supposed to happen? If indeed that does happen, will someone replace it to incentivize the redevelopment and start construction, or perhaps for a study?
Yeah. The question is, the historic tax credits at the state level, as you might, some may recall, had sunset previously. The General Assembly reinstated them, modified them slightly, but also set a new near-term sunset date in 2020. I cannot speak to the General Assembly's intent for the next steps there, but I think what you saw is that following the past sunset, there was a lot of interest that spurred them on to reinstitute the tax credit. The need for the historic, state historic tax credit is not going away. The economic development benefits of the state historic tax credit are pretty well-known. So the plans here and the financial feasibility assessment that was performed in the study, you'll see how we modeled the sources and uses of capital for these projects, and we leveraged historic tax credits where, in every case that it made sense. The federal historic tax credit is still in play, but obviously, the state historic tax credit is critical to filling the gap of capital required to do these complex and costly adaptive reuse projects. Sorry, I don't have a crystal ball for you.
Peter, Louis Vina, City Attorney. Could you address why you, in your vision, placed the large portion of the public amenities investment in Phase 1 at the beginning? What the significance of that is?
Question is, why in our vision plan did we include a large chunk of the public amenities in Phase 1, the initial three to four years of the three-phase, 10-year plan? We did that for a couple of reasons. One, simply to do with geography. The bulk of the amenities and the costs associated with the amenities are on the northern half of the site, closer to downtown. The initial phases of investment, private investment and the public investment in the school, the adaptive reuse products there are also on the northern half of downtown, I mean, northern half of the district closer to downtown. We think that it's important that the amenities come in as much as possible in tandem with the private investment, and because creating the strong connection to downtown is going to be important to capitalizing on the value of the district, those initial investments, which are going to be some of the more risky ones, where you're trying to convince a development partner to come in while the district is not yet established, but to contribute to establishing the district, by committing to making those investments early, you're starting to plant your flag in the ground that this is a district plan that the local government's committed to. Now, should the phasing play out differently, to maybe where the southeast corner of the site is a part of the initial phase and maybe not the property adjacent to the School for the Deaf? Well, then that would maybe reframe how we look at the amenities. Nevertheless, we think that the off-site improvements to improve the Fleming-Stirling intersection and the pedestrian connectivity there, the bringing that greenway spine down and the stormwater pond in the center of the site are critical pieces, sort of table stakes for the district plan to be successful at all. And fortunately, unfortunately, those are some of the biggest investments. So that's really what's going to signal to the market and provide the anchor around which to build the rest of the vision.
Any other questions from the audience?
Very strong thought, Paul. Again, in your study, have you recognized that this is a pushback from private developers of causing proximity to a mental institution, a security link, is there then, or do you think that that's going to be wrong?
Question is, is there any sensitivity with prospective private development interest to being located close to an operational mental institution? To this point, it's something that is noted, but looking at the layout of the sites and the fact that the institution has been operating for such a long time in this community without major concern or incident, and that you do have thriving commercial corridors, residential neighborhoods of downtown, all very much close to the existing hospital, it's not really that there's a big change in the state of affairs. We're bringing some private uses closer to the hospital by bringing it on-site, bringing it across Sterling and Fleming. So that said, in talking with DHHS, there's also concern that we asked them about, are you comfortable with these uses being so close to your facility? And while they wanted to make note that, yes, they would be concerned about what could come near to the site, the plan that we laid out was one that they reviewed in all of its iterations leading up to the final report and were comfortable with, thinking about the buffers and recognizing that they're not trying to create an isolated area, but they need a sufficient space around their property to navigate. There are certain uses on the site that when we talk about replacement facilities being constructed to make way for the district, it was not feasible to envision that portions of the historic Broughton Hospital campus could be retained long-term for hospital functions or for the Department of Public Safety Correction Enterprise's laundry facility, and envision that a residential school or a hotel or some other use would come into the Broughton Hospital property. That was definitely too much, too close and being on top of each other too much. So we had to, we're having to work through that and understand how we can create some separation, but the plan as currently envisioned has not thrown up any roadblocks.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I think with that, we'll close our question-answer period. Let me thank Dr. Mitchell and Peter for being here this afternoon, for providing an excellent plan, and certainly, this commission and our council will take this plan, and hopefully we can begin to mold it into a vision for our county and our city as well. And we'll be working together to do what we can to make things move forward in a positive way here in Morganton and Burke County. At this time then, I'll ask the mayor if he'd like to adjourn his meeting.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn Morganton City Council.
Second. All in favor, signify saying aye. Stand adjourned for Morganton.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. And I'll, at this time, entertain a motion to adjourn our commission meeting.
So moved.
Your motion, all in favor, signify by the up lifted hand, please. And with that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you for being with us today.